So I'm going to ask you to join me, pledge allegiance, if you start, that's alright? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in itsness. Thank you all. Thanks for being out tonight, especially since it's a great night, great day it was. So I have to add here, I have some slides, it's relatively, I say short, slide. It'll be as long or short as we want to make it, and it will certainly open up to any questions you all have. It's a real open format, the meeting's for you all to answer any questions, address any concerns you might have. I'll try to cover topics, if I haven't covered something enough, just ask. You know, that's what it's here for, and we'll go from there. Do I go with that? I see a lot of folks that have been here before and some that haven't, so we're going to see how this goes. Alright, some of the topics we'll cover tonight, I'm going to run through the numbers, where we are financially, it's always important for our membership to know. Some safety and security items, some budget items, we're also going to talk about some projects underway, some future planning, and then open up to any other questions I may not have covered. Interestingly, usually during the town hall meetings, we get at least a handful of email questions that came in, we didn't get any email questions. So that means one of two things. I'm thinking it's because we're doing such a great job, people didn't have any questions. Probably not. That was my hope, or it was just such a nice few days that people decided not to take the time to do it. But trust me, after these, we typically get some follow-up as well. Let me go through some of these by the numbers. So far, the performance, couple of the area, performance as well, association, we're projecting the bottom right corners, which you basically look at, a positive variance by the end of the year. That's what we're looking, where we're going to end up being. Right now, some areas I wanted to highlight for you, the aquatics department is well exceeding their budget, they're performing very well, they're going to be as close, I'm predicting, and I know our project director doesn't like my say, but they're going to be real close to break even this year, which is something that has not happened since the pool was covered. So that's something we're all, can be real, real excited about. The other highlight, the yacht club is performing extremely well, one of the things, and that's the bottom, you see yacht club plus, you notice on the far right, it's a $58,000 variance, which is a negative, but if you looked at the number, the two commas before it, we're actually operating in the black, and we're still, the performance is still very, very good at the club. There were some changes at the end of the year with the budget, which threw that budget number versus the actual number off, but bottom line for us is we're in the black right now, which we have not been in years, trying to go back and look at this stage of the game. Concern we have is that end of December, January, February, March is when we have the biggest runoff when it comes to expenses. We just don't have the volume, so you're trying to manage those down, but the numbers are looking pretty good for the year right now, very, very positive. Some things have happened recently that aren't so positive, we've had a lot of break-ins lately, but I want to make sure that folks understand, people are getting into your cars, not breaking into them, they're actually just opening the doors because they're unlocked. The police chief keeps sending out the messages, lock your cars, lock your homes. Again, I know we're an extremely safe community, but the drug abuse is starting to go up, the heroin use is up, and that's nationwide, not just here. Governor Hogan here in the state ran a special task force, see what Maryland can do to offset that, you know, what types of actions they can do to slow that or to prevent that from occurring, but it's not stopping the fact that it's occurring out there, folks. And a lot of the break-ins that have occurred is where people have left their cars unlocked, or their homes unlocked, and folks have just walked in. So just be aware of it, just a ounce of prevention, just lock your doors, because they just walk to the next driveway, and the next driveway until they find one opening, it's just a easy target, just be aware of it. The other thing, along that lines, when I was talking about the drug issue, one of the things, a big budget discussion, we're working hand in hand with the county in a lot of ways, and one of the big ways the board approved this year was to add another officer to participate with the criminal task force that actually does drug interdiction with the county. So that's a pretty big step for us, and being the largest year-round community from a population standpoint, that's huge for us, because drugs are coming in community at higher rates than most people realize. Our police department does a very, very good job, you know, solving the cases and working through the cases, but because of the increase, having someone assigned to that task force is just going to give us more intel, more updated information, which will continue to help make the community as safe as we are. But it is something to be aware of, so I wanted to make sure I highlight, please lock your doors, please lock your car doors in your house. I hate to have to say it, especially in our community, but we've got to be realistic, just do that, and it's going to make a huge difference. Residents' checks. One thing that folks forget about is, and again, we're coming to the end of it now, but a lot of folks, when you travel down to Florida, you're going to be away for an extended period, you can actually download a form, sign up, and we residents' check, where they'll go by and check on a regular basis, knowing you're not there, which is an unusual circumstance, and they'll go by and do that type of check. So just be aware of that, take advantage of it. I mean, it doesn't just have to be winter time when you're going to Florida, if you're taking extended vacation, or if you had a short vacation, you just want to have your house checked, just go fill the form out, take the police department. I mean, we're, our police department handles big and small things, but the biggest thing it takes is community police department. So they're there to serve those type of needs. I think a lot of times people forget that, so just be aware of it, and that's something else that can help you is rest. Hurricane prep, this time, we're really always starting to think about it as we begin the spring season, because then you start looking into the midsummer and then early, early fall when the season heightens. So our fire department folks will be going to the hurricane conference, it's either this week or next, I can't remember which one Bill was telling me, but that's positive, they always come back with information, what the season's going to look like, what their forecasting, and new preventative, any new ideas, any things we should be looking at, and we do keep our website updated with that information. Just be aware of that, these are all kind of public safety things I wanted to make sure I covered. Any questions about this? Budget highlights. Budget was approved at the February board meeting. What that means, as soon as the budget gets approved, the assessment folks, the membership desk, actually starts crafting, creating your assessments to mail out to you. They were, our fronters have been running all day, so they're, our fronters with the assessments bills, along with the letters, everything that goes out with it, they'll go, the carrier actually picks it up tomorrow, and then it should go out in the mail at some point next, you know, they take it, they stamp it, and everything works. Some things that occur, if you all remember, our budget year ends April 30th, then on May 1st, the assessment this year stayed the same, there was no increase in your assessment, along with the fact, there were no amenity increases for any of the programs, anything you participate in, there were no increases in fees on those either. So everything's kind of flat this year. Some budget highlights, I just wanted to point out, just some things that we had a lot of discussion about, hardware and software upgrades, where our systems, our mainframe systems extremely antiquated, we're working through some, we're actually ramping up our process. Some things that have happened recently that's going to be helping for us making decisions on what type of software and/or hardware to go forward with, more on the hardware platform side, is the introduction of fiber lines all on the outside of the community. Working with a couple of companies that are the last mile provider, and they're the ones that actually take it from, Maryland broadband brought it down throughout the state, it was a state initiative, and they connected all the counties. Example, the library, they connected to the wastewater treatment plant, and any of those facilities. Well, there's, they're the ones that ran it throughout to get it to those locations, but then they have, what happens is the last mile provider is a third-party contractor actually comes in, makes that final jump from wherever they put the pedestal to whatever the building, or wherever the final connection's supposed to be. Well, I've been talking directly with them, see what we can do to potentially get fiber into our community from first, from our amenity side, because that'll certainly speed up a lot of the access and what we do. And then secondly, that'll help us make better decisions on the technology platform that we're looking, you know, which one we should go with, because a lot of that, Terry, how are you? A lot of that has, whether it's remotely hosted, locally hosted, and then how we communicate between the buildings, between the different amenities. So all that, the recent fiber integration in the county, we're hoping starts to help us as well, so we can make those better long-term decisions. Wi-Fi here in the community center, we have budget, we will be putting Wi-Fi in here. Part of the challenge with, when we budget Wi-Fi before, part of the challenge with the Wi-Fi is the size of the building and the use of the building. When we have a lot of people in here using the Wi-Fi, a standard system does work, you get one that has enough bandwidth to support a lot of users in, like a number of laptops, a number of computers, a number of people checking their phones. We haven't had that capability. Now, we, again, with the introduction of fiber and some of the soft, or, I'm sorry, the hardware, the infrastructure updates we're looking at, we'll be able to offer that upgrade of Wi-Fi this year. So that's an extreme positive for those that want to come and use our facilities. The road resurfacing plan, we have an ongoing plan, it gets reviewed each year. As a matter of fact, I had, towards the end of last year, had someone come in and look at that plan. There's a lot of, one thing I'm looking at this year as part of the road resurfacing plan, isn't just the paving part of it, there are actual companies out there that are starting to do some of the airports, like BWI, where instead of repaving, they're applying this coating, not like you see the guys come out and roll it in your driveway, it's an actual different type of application that's supposed to keep the, actually keep the asphalt pliable, so it's not cracking, falling apart, and degrading very quickly. So what we're trying to do is look at, because that's a much more cost-effective approach, if it extends the life of the asphalt, then our paving becomes a cheaper process. I just don't have enough information on it yet, because that's always something scary, you don't want to spend money on someone painting your roads if it's not going to add the value that you're looking for. So that's one of the many things we're looking at. But with that being said, we do have money budgeted to do road resurfacing this year, it'll take place. The roads do, I noticed with 70 miles of roads, we do an extensive evaluation each year, and we go down each road, we identify, we take pictures, we keep, it's, I keep it in a three-ring binder on my desk, Public Works has a copy, so they know, you know, I have folks that come in and say, our road's horrible. I can actually tell you what your road conditions are now, and what they have been over the last few years, just by looking at binder. You may think yours are poor, but yours may be good compared to others. When one of the asphalt rejuvenation companies came in, they, one of the things they do is survey all roads, and they get, that's part of what they do when they're on their pitch, what it worked. Well, we actually hand up our binder, and they were like, wow, we hadn't seen a community do it to this level. They actually asked if they could take a copy of it. Well, it was funny, when they came back and followed up, they sent a couple of their guys out to do some spot checks on what we had, and the way we rate them, and the way that we do it, they said, there can't be a better way to do it. Our guys do a very, very thorough job. Now, this was a third-party contractor validating, like that, because what we did was work with state highways folks that actually do roads, to learn how to do this process, and that's where our Public Works teams developed the strategy of how we approach it. So it's good, it's effective, and it's just something that a lot of people don't see the extra steps there. We're considering upgrades to the country club, we've had a lot of water penetration over the year. Recently, we've had some water from that second floor on the park barn side, where it's coming right in through the sills, we're actually going to pull the siding off. We started doing it last week, and then we had the snow, we're going to do it the week before. We have to rent a lift to do this, so it's timing for everything, but when they start to fill back some of it, look, then you have, we have siding on top of Cedar Shake, so then Cedar Shake's going to have to come off, and then we have to see what the underlayment is, so we're going through that process, see what needs to be done in that building. So we're doing that in addition to pulling out the old studies, engineering studies, and anything else we have on the building, so we can make some decisions of what needs to be done, not only today, but for the future of the country. There's mine set aside for some study of the police station, we've identified that last year as a need to, the police station's been in the same condition since the mid-'80s, and they've completely outgrown it, and we've had a couple of police officer, people that have served in police force, two of them on the board now, and they've walked through it, they completely agree with it, our password agreed with it, so we're looking at what to do with the police station. Most of the ones in the area have been upgraded in the last 10 years or so. Berlin's actually underway, they've got their spotlight up, they've got their station design. Fruitland did theirs recently, it was either, it was Fenwick did theirs, so we're looking at whatever else is going to, see what we may need to do with ours. Yacht Club, one of the things we've talked about over the years, it's a stepped approach, get the building done, and of course, you know, all the, it's a cafeteria, it's this, it's the other. We took a stepped approach, year three of being open's when we said we're going to get after the decor process. I mean, it's just, it hasn't changed, and we are, we are making some investments, some of the decor, we're looking at some areas such as some deflectors upstairs that actually absorb sound, some of the panels that absorb some of the sound where it's carrying around off. But we're looking at putting in above, we tried it last year, it worked out extremely well, we put the air curtains and some of the strategic doors, and we changed our flow, it dramatically reduced the fly penetration from the previous year. We're in a wetlands environment, we're on the marsh, you're going to have that, but how do you mitigate that? That worked extremely well, so now what we're doing is putting on the other doors to help, hopefully, hope that takes care of the majority of the issue for us. Extremely cost-effective approach as well, much more cost-effective than we thought it would be, so that is something we're pushing forward with. We're also looking at some awnings out at Tiki Bar, that was a bit of an interesting one for me, you're at a tiki bar, you're outside, you're supposed to be in the sun, but I was told otherwise, we'd be putting an awning up. So we're putting an awning up, we're going to look at awnings for the tiki bar. So I wanted to put sunscreen, just put there for free samples, but that board didn't think that was worthwhile, so I see a couple of board members giving out, look, don't say that. So we are working on those type of things. The other thing I want to bring up with the budget, which has created, well, let's talk about the, we put on a mobile food concessions, okay? I mean, you like that? I started to put the Wiener Mobile again, just to rub it in, but board agreed to leave that in. Everyone thinks the, everyone thinks they know where that came from. Let me just clarify, so you understand what started it. The initial start was, we were cooking outside on the patio, and the health department said you can't do that, you can't have an open grill, you can't pay, if you're going to do it, you have to have three parts, a sink, a grease trap, all these other things went in. So when we started going, we had that issue come up, I actually went directly to the health department, sat down with them, they're the ones that introduced a food trailer or food truck if we want to do outside service. Just so you know, it wasn't something we came up with, just roll the dice and see what happened. Well, then it kind of went from there, I thought, all right, well, we'll just cancel the service right now, let's look at. Well, then when we started looking at areas that we wanted to add food service, we tried to snag one, the swimmer rack, anybody that's been here for eight years knows, we had an operation there for years, and it worked, I don't know why they stopped it when they did, but we reintroduced it, it performed extremely well, the swimmer rack. Then we started looking at, what's the next pool that we have to consider doing this? Well, that becomes Muffet's, that's where there's a ton of kids and a ton of parents go to Muffet's Landing Pool, but we don't have food service in. So we started identifying those things, and then we started looking at, okay, what other things, concerts in the park, movie night in the park, Fourth of July celebration, you start going down the list of all the events that we have in Swayman, this actually could be something to serve the needs of our community for that type of thing, quick ram and go. We have a successful beach club, we have a successful snack bar, and now a successful yacht club, serving all different levels of food. This falls in between two of them, so okay, so it's, so we feel we have the expertise on staff that help us get the right type of product to put on it, how to put it out there. Now, there's a lot of rumblings out there, what you can't, you have to serve all three counties, if you didn't, you don't have to serve all three counties, there's a lot of rules that people are throwing out, just aren't factual. So we're looking at, we did a business performance, see how it would work, we were conservative in the approach, so there's a lot of things that went into it, it's not just a, let's make it up and go, folks. So understand that there were a number of things that led up to making that final decision. It's in the budget, we'll still work on, we're going, we do a budgetary item where we put what we think it'll be based on our costs, or based on what we do as estimate. Before we go by, we'll actually have to, you know, look at the trucks, get the equipment, get everything specifically labeled out, get it figured out, and then bring it back to the board for final approval. So that's kind of the process for the truck. The other thing that came up, a couple of things in the budget that I wanted to make sure I talked about tonight, because it seems to be creating some ill will or misunderstanding, other than the Wiener Mobile, is how the budget works. There's confusion when you're buying a replacement item, and it creates, I've seen some nasty emails, it's a lack of information from the people sending the emails is where it starts, okay? If you're going to send nasty emails, why don't you ask first? Ask why we're doing it, ask us to explain it. Example, a lot of nasty emails about a lot, if it's three or four, that's a lot to me because I don't like negative, a lot of negative emails about the Tahoe that was in the, in the, in there, we're replacing, we're replacing two vehicles for one, we're going with a slightly larger SUV than the smaller ones we have, and we justify all of them. But the question came in, why do we budget so much for this particular truck? And one of the board members, rightly so, asked, why do you have the other seats, why do you have satellite, why do you have all that? As I explained then, but more importantly, I want to make sure I explain to the membership again, because I don't think everyone pays attention to it. We do an estimate, with trucks, it's easy, we just call one of the local dealers and say, give us a, you know, what's a truck, a F-150 Ford pickup going for right now, we want to replace it. They'll send us the spec sheet. We include that in our worksheet when we do the budget, as an example of where the market is today. That's not the truck we're buying, that's not necessarily all the equipment we're buying, okay? It's just a sample. Anytime we put a worksheet in the budget, we try to back it up with some sort of example of what it is, so you can open it, look at, go, okay, that, you may not know what an F-150 is, you may not know what a pickup is, you may not know what an SUV is, I don't know, whatever it is we're doing, we try to back it up. But what it doesn't do, for those who get all upset, well, the Tahoe's $61,000, that's bad budgeting. Folks, it doesn't impact your budget, it's a replacement item, doesn't impact it till next year. So whatever we buy, okay, they're really, we're starting to get, now that it's approved, we're starting to get real pricing, we'll do a bid process, but they're really around $40,000. Well, guess what, whether we put 70, 100, or 80, and it's irrelevant, your assessment does not impact buying, and it's based on what the board approves at the time, it's a replacement item. So when folks are sending emails, I can't believe they're budgeting, that's bad budgeting, it's irrelevant, it's a sample of what's out, of what's available at the time. There weren't SUVs, there weren't others of that size SUVs on the lot at the time, they just sent us that. And knowing it's a replacement item, it doesn't have a direct impact to say, oh, you missed it by $20,000, it wasn't a miss, it was an example, so that, not the equipment on it. So I just want to make sure I share that, because it came up with a couple of the budget items, it's not a budget miss, folks, I know budget, because it's a replacement item, it doesn't impact any of our assessments till after it's purchased. It was a new capital item, brand new, it would impact you. We'd be a little sharper with the pencil, because it's more important at that time, because it directly impacts your, whatever your assessment is, because it's a new capital item. But a replacement item, it just isn't that way. So that's a big difference when you're looking at budget, okay? So I just want to make sure I put that out there, because there were several issues, and again, it's more of a misunderstanding, or not understanding, when you're looking at that, but it's a reserve replacement item, so it's not impacted all year, and it's only impacted by the amount we spend at the time, okay? So I just want to make sure I put that out there, because there's no need to be upset about it, and I wish those folks that sent the emails, and all upset, who just called or sent me an email, I don't understand why this versus that. It's not a hard explanation, but if you don't know it, it's hard to understand.
Maybe skipped over the beach club.
Oh, thanks, thanks. Any other questions? No, beach club, okay. Beach club, one of the things board wants to do is look at putting bathrooms, renovating, replacing something with the bathrooms at the beach club, so we've put money in to actually address that this year. What we'll do is, we'll look at design, there was a design done five, six years ago now, to put bathrooms in separate from the building, a separate set of that, not below grade. We have an estimate in the budget to do replacement in place, in other words, we'll renovate what's there. There are permitting, there's a lot of nuances that are going to go with that, so we'll work through that process, but for anybody who thinks it's going to be done in the spring, now, this is probably a fall. Okay, we'll start our process, we've got to look at permitting, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean we're pulling the trigger, plus, that wouldn't disrupt the operation there during the, you don't want to have construction during the 100 days when we're actually open. So we are looking at doing bathroom renovations over there. Another point of interest being in the beach club, the last nor'easter that blew through, real heavy storm, I don't know if any of us, we lost part of the roof over there, blew off the copper roof, which was a bit of a surprise to us, so we're working with our insurance company to make sure it's prepared prior to the season.
Did you miss anything else, Nick? Beach club, please, yacht.
Sportscore pool project's been in the works for a couple of years, we actually started the process, we bid it out, we've received the bids, basically, we had $250,000 for the pool replacement to include the resurfacing deck, came in all in, at around $255,000, so it's pretty close to budget, and the board approved those at the last meeting, the work, it's actually for the sports core, the coverage pool. What happens is, we're going to do the work in July and August, it'll be done September 10th, that's what we put out the RFP, we're going to have the other four pools open at the time. We didn't want to have all the pools closed down, and be working on one, you know, we didn't want to, first, members who, swim members and those type of things, didn't want to disrupt them by closing, you know, closing the cover down at a time we didn't have others available. So that's why that timeframe. The other thing is, if you've been in there and you see the decking, where we have cracks in the deck, and this and that, we looked at, we looked at scarifying, and basically, scarifying is where you're marking up, making the surface, the ability to put new concrete or something else down on it, so that it makes contact, seal. What we've elected to do in lieu of that is to ask contractors come in and get it leveled with leveling compounds, and then do the rubber ice decking on top of it. We did it around the Muffet's Pool last year, extremely successful. A lot of other places around that have used the product, and it was, it looked real good, it certainly, it covers everything the way we need to do, it's really going to dress up, part of the leveling is getting the water to flow off, and drains the way it's supposed to, so all those things will, will shut down. So when it reopens in the, in the early fall, that September timeframe, everything in there will be redone, which will look really, really nice. The other thing that we're doing, we're creating an easier entry point, there's a kind of a bump out that's going to occur, so you have a step into it, you know, a couple of steps down, much easier to enter the pool, folks really like that option. We're surprised, so, oh, new pumps are going in, so it's a, it's kind of an all-in thing, and we're excited about it, it's really going to add some value to the pool. The other thing that's really interesting with aquatics, aquatics is just, the team over there is just knocking the cover off, doing a fantastic job, their numbers look great, way ahead of any previous years. One of the other things they introduced this year is we have aquacycles coming in the fall, and that's where you actually do a spin class for those that, you ride a bike, it's a spin, a stationary bike, it's a spin class, very, very popular exercise, well, they have those for pools now. And apparently, areas where they've had them, they're sold out, they just can't keep enough of them in the water to keep folks going, so just one of the many program offerings that Aquatics is, will be doing in the fall. So I can't say enough about where those numbers continue to go, we're excited about that, excited. This, and then the last pool that we'll have to do a whole renovation in, is the beach club pool, something, everything else will be pretty much, you know, wrapped up in the renovation standard. Bridge repair, you guys heard about this for 100 years now, okay? We've identified, we've talked to, we've coordinated with so many different things, we're actually going out, we put the RFP out to have the bridge repair accomplished on two of our four bridges, okay? Basically, the ones down near the golf course are where the two, the one on the parkway, directly in front of the golf course and Pub House Drive there, so those two, it's repair work, a little more extensive than just repairing rails, because because where the rails actually attach to the bridge itself, there's strong concrete, had to be repaired. So we believe we're going to, we've got all the engineering work. It went out bid, so, and forget when the date due back, it'll be in the near future because we'll get that and it's probably going to be a spring, maybe even summer project. It shouldn't be too much disruption roadway. It's not closing very quickly. If they were replacing it, we'd have a bigger issue. Okay, so that, you'll see that underway soon. Pink Meadows Project. Okay, this is pickleball platform playground, the gardens, all rolled into one. We started this process two years ago. It's one of the things where we recognize we need some pickleball courts. We recognize we need some additional platform tennis courts. We recognize that the playground that's down there, some of the uprights need to be replaced. There's a whole host of things happening down there. So after multiple iterations of what to do, we finally came up with, it was Plan Four, which included all this work on, for platform, pickle, playground, community gardens, parking lot, just a whole lot of work went into it. Well, put that together, put it out for bid. The bid came in three times, we thought the estimates were. Part of the biggest challenge you have is the stormwater management, type of things that you have to do to mitigate stormwater runoff. So with that happening, we had to regroup, obviously, the budgetary item changes dramatically. So we're in the process of looking at different phases and different approaches to stormwater management. Some of it still meets the criteria, just different type of holding pond or holding area where it holds the water. One of the things we're doing right now is we're testing the soil to see how much it drains because how quickly it actually soaks with water will determine what type of stormwater management system we can expand. They do three or four, two or three patch of borings and they come back and say, here's the compaction and here's how well it drains. It's important because if you do the less expensive approach to the stormwater where you do the ponds and you put the vegetation in, if it drains too quickly, your vegetation docks and it kills the purpose of what the pond's supposed to do. If it holds it too long, you have the potential for it dying. So we're, all those things happen here. There's a lot more process that has to occur than just, you know, digging a spot and saying the water's going to drain this way. But we're, we feel good about where we are with that. We've been working directly with some of our county folks, help coaches on some other things to look at that may help just the price on, on the entire project. So in the coming weeks, we're going to have some, much more information to bring out there. So Phase One, or we're looking at, at least right now, and again, we're just going to make final approval on one of the things we are moving forward with, is we have community gardens, which folks have been on me for, I've met with them three different times now. We are going to, anybody here from community gardens? All right, well, if anyone's watching from community gardens, we know you're going to start planting soon, okay? So we're making the move so we don't disrupt you during planting season. We recognize, so that's just a gate move, that one's not too tough. The other thing is replacing the uprights on the playground. We don't want to replace it, replace the uprights on the playground and then have to move it again once the project starts. So we're trying to, we already have the uprights for it. We ordered them last year there in the public works yard. It's just a matter of, as soon as we get the final plan approved, we'll then either move it or rebuild it in place. But I don't want to move it twice because anyone knows, when you, once you put it all together, if you go to move it, everything becomes loose and never gets as tight as it should have been from the start. So we're in that process now. That too, we'll have a lot more information in coming weeks on that because we recognize that it's a spring project because if nothing else, we want to get the playground rebuilt in place or move it over. I mean, it just has to be done, so we're going to get on doing. White Horse Park bathrooms. And I watched the recent concerns about that. It got a little dicey on, but board recognized it was in the budget this year. We, the bathrooms are outside here, are in really, really poor shape. They've been here forever. We're replacing those. So we have a design to build where the mailboxes are out here, right behind there. We've staked it out, put some stakes in for anybody who wants to go over and see approximately where it's going to be. But it's a replacement of the bathrooms. So folks using the park side, either the pavilion or an activity in the park, don't have to cross a busy parking lot to come use the restrooms. Something that can be our size, certainly something we should have. So that should be, we're working, again, working with county because we do have stormwater mitigation. We have all those type of things you have to deal with anytime you build something. We'll build a road cop here right now, we'll be able to start that and get it back. That'll be a relatively quick project. It's not that big. Basically, three toilets, a couple sinks, and the ladies and two toilets in her area and all the man is in a sink. The other thing, and that's not the final design, there's one that's a little bit wider for the, we see where it says utility chase in the middle. We're actually, we're looking to buy another large shed like you see out here for storage. We're building a bathroom, we're just widening the center area where you use that for storage. We're going to have to buy a shed. It's just a cost-effective way of doing it and quite frankly, much nicer. And the board approved those. Bids came in, all the local contractors. So we, that was recently approved. The board decided that they wanted to review it. Get a little more time to get some questions answered. We went through that process and then the board approved it. The email reaffirmed that at the next quarter. Okay, future planning. There seems to be a lot of question, you know, Yucca, I'm sorry, Country Club, Beach Club, what building does what? We've crafted, there's a couple of things we're looking at right now, which should help us with the community. I want to say look forward, I'm not talking next year, 365 days. I'm looking at the next five, 10, 15 years out. We really need to start thinking more strategically and not immediate need. And I've been saying that for a couple of years. We created some of the process we used over several years. Got a little off last year, we're back track with it. Capital Improvement Plan. And what we were doing was basically taking a look at all our facilities, all of our major assets, and then putting them in order, identifying what the needs are. And that helps us for planning purposes, what has the highest and most need right now? Instead of just saying, I want this because this is what I want. Well, how's it impacted by everything else? So we're trying to think not only immediate need, but future needs of the community as well. So we can do, Tom Terry just called the rack and stack. That was a military term I used a lot for priorities. We always do a rack and stack and that's why I initially called it. So it's pretty much a rack and stack, what order of priorities when you want to address the site. So we've done that. So that's it. One of the things we delivered on shooting forth with Budget Works was a facility planning document that actually has a 10-year look ahead, that's closer strategic planning. It's not the final, because some folks say, well, that's what we're doing. It's not what we're doing. It's a starting point for talks so we can start talking about. We don't put something out there we're never going to talk about. We're never going to put it in order. You got to start somewhere. So we put it out there. In addition, the board asked last year, let's get forward with the reserve study. So we're in the process of doing a pretty intensive reserve study. They've come out, they've looked at all the assets, they've done estimated life on the assets, current conditions of the assets. When I say asset, building, the major structures that we have. So we'll be meeting, VMA is the company we're working with. We'll be meeting with them again, looking in the next two, three weeks. They're going to come in, be, and we're going to go through a Q and A about the document they've produced so far. It's a draft document, just pretty much lists all our assets and what they think's remaining life. And then we'll start to build a deeper into that over the next weeks and then hopefully that'll be, we'll make that final and that'll be a final document that helps us say, how are we doing with reserves based on what the received needs are? That should be extremely helpful when you look at future planning. Knowing where you are, what the current conditions of those things, extremely important. I think you're going to make the wise decision moving forward. Instead of some immediate decisions based on immediate need, we're looking a little further out. So I think that's, that's going to end up being a good, good tool for us in long-term planning. The other item that's underway right now is Comprehensive Committee is working on the Beacon Study, working with Salisbury University. Come up, what they basically do, they're working on survey questions now. Basically, survey community. They send it out, they get input from the committee and come back and it helps you what your community looks like today and what they believe the future needs of community may be based on the responses they've received from the membership. So really, we're hitting this from a number of different levels to do future planning, which is the right approach. It's putting a lot of foundational blocks in so to make those future decisions, you have a reasonable understanding of why you've made those decisions. So there's a lot of work underway right now that should help us as we look at what the future of the community should do. Town Hall meeting is in two days with Sam Piper. They're coming in, they're going to be right here in this room two nights from now. They've already started the conversion process here in the, we ended up getting frantic calls from folks. Well, you're not telling us, people are putting in tanks without framing them. First, again, relax a little bit, okay? They started quickly. We called and they're like, oh yeah, we've already started this process in this area. Well, once we figure out that's what they had done, we should look, you need to come in and tell it all of us, not just a couple, what's going on. So they're coming in two nights from now, they're excited to be here. They're going to come, they're going to do a presentation of what they do, how it happens from the door hangers, phone calls, the emails, provide emails so you know when they're coming. I'm going to tell you, this is a four or five-year process. This is not an overnight process. We have a lot of homes, a lot of streets, a lot of non-resident owners. So it's going to take a lot of coordination as they go through it. They've had some issues come up, as a matter of fact, today, or yesterday, issue come up when they were purging, they have the piping, and they're going to talk about this a little tomorrow, you know, where they have the diagrams of where this piping's been entered. Well, when they went to shut the main for these, it cut off one other road, which 10 home, 10, 12 other homes were impacted. Obviously, that's an immediate issue. So those things are going to happen with implementation inside. That's the neat part, it's they, despite the fact of all the headache getting to where we are now, the advantage to us as a community is they kind of worked all the works out, working hard with communities around us. So as ugly as it got for a little while, and result, they've worked out their response. They know the teams they're working with. They've run into similar problems at other areas. So it should be helpful when they get here because they've already experienced X, Y, or Z. So it should help them with implementation. So, you know, that's the silver lining in the cloud that took a long time to get the D O A deposit is and we're better off on the term front. So they'll be in, they're going to show you, that's the map of where they're starting now. They've agreed to keep us updated and we'll put it on our website. We've also asked them, they're starting to get the questions, the Q and As basically. We've asked them to provide that to us and we're going to put a separate page on our website where we're going to put questions and what the answers are. And we'll start tracking, everything they give us, we're going to track and put up there, where they're working, like the maps, we're going to keep that updated. So you'll be able to go to our website and be able to see where they are, you know, where they're, where they are and where they're headed, okay? And we're going to, part of the deal is we're trying to be extremely engaged with them so you don't have to try to go through it for different places. You jump on the website and take a look because they're going to try to keep that upgraded, updated. And that's one of the things, as a matter of fact, recently I met with them yesterday. It's, we want the Q and As from the meeting on Thursday night. So we go ahead and put on the website for those who can't be. Now, we will record it, stream it, you'll be able to look at the video as well, but we call it capturing notes, it's going to be important. So we'll go on the site. Yes, ma'am? There are, what they explained last, or last night, yesterday to us at your presentation, tomorrow night with some of the Q and A, there are, depending on what your issue is, it has some different points, but we know where the immediate contact is. We have one or two people that go to immediate, immediate contact. Yes? No, ma'am. I want Sam Piper to handle their calls, but listen, I know I'm going to get the calls, front desk is going to get the calls. We have, we need to contact, and I'll share who is the contact person from Sam Piper to manage the problem.
Have you seen a lot of people convert to delivery? Do you know everybody?
I don't know what the conversion rate is. And tomorrow, or, I'm sorry, Thursday night, that might be a good question answer. So they'll have, they're going to have a whole host of people here. They're setting up four different tables to get specific areas for questions so it'll be a little more targeted. It'll be interesting to see how that works because I'm used to this type of Q and A. And I think Shane, I don't know which camera's on, but Shane, you'll be going in us in two nights. I joked with him, said, look, if you want to see how folks respond, watch Monday or Tuesday night meeting. He laughed and said, I think I will. So they'll be out, they'll do a presentation and, and then they'll go from there with the Q and A. And like I said, I think they're going to put four different tables. You can be a little more specific where your questions are. We looked at, had a quick rundown of our preliminary draft of their presentations. It looked pretty good. They covered, I didn't see, there were only a couple of small things I asked them, you know, some things we, or questions we've had that we've asked them to include and they certainly said they, so. I've got to tell you, they've been great to work with so far, at least from my perspective. And the engagement's been real good. It changes bumpy. I mean, trust me, we all know that heck, I would change trash every three years and we go through six months of, oh my goodness, I can't believe we did this. So we know change is hard, but again, offering another product to, for energy needs here in the community, I think is good. If you don't want to go that way, you certainly still go back to the tank, that's your choice. So you're not forced one way or the other. So it's, I think, advantageous to us all and they'll be in to answer questions. So look forward to that, tomorrow, go back two nights. And that is it for the formal canned presentation. Now, the for yours, Frank, questions? There's hands. Yes, sir, we'll start the back left corner.
Did you mention the Salisbury study?
Yes.
Where we are, where we're going?
Yes.
Have they looked forward where we are, where we're going with this Country Club to justify spending a lot of money?
No, they have, I don't think the Beacon Study will be that specific for facilities. Again, I'm not part of the comprehensive plan. The board's actually going to hear more on, they have a special meeting Monday to look at the types of questions that are going to go out for all of us. What's that?
Who does use the country?
Who does use the country? Well, the golfers use it, obviously. We have the Miss Anna's group, I saw her come in. Her Bridge Group, I was going to say, her Bridge Group uses it every Wednesday. Periodically, we'll have an event. We offer wedding and catering type things for functions at either Yucca Beach Club or Country Club. So some folks use it there as well. Yeah, other community activities have been had there. The, we had a couple of, was it two years ago? We had the, what, Open House, but we had the, the Mall of Coastal Base has had something there. So we've done a number of different things that have occurred there. The venue size, again, price point venue size, having that gives us some options. Like, so we look at the Country Club. We'll go down the line here. Yes, sir.
It's not going to be what you think. Just have a question.
Sure.
Can you explain to me what the difference, what general maintenance department compared to your public works department? What are the differences?
Yeah.
I was wondering what is the other?
Yeah. Public Works is overarching. Think of all, all the white trucks, all the, all the work they spend all time in public. That's the main. We have, Maintenance Department takes care of general maintenance, whether it's fixing fences to ACs out. You know, that's where we'll have our electrician, our HVAC guy, those type of things that can go out and do general maintenance items.
Why is it separate? Why is it separated, the two departments?
Well, there's more. You've got drainage team that operates independently. We have a, what's the number, 24, 26-person teams? I mean, overall, under Public Works.
Which is in Public Works.
Yeah, and they each have different lines, functional items. So you can't, we don't have to have, you know, three master electricians or multiple trades at a high level. We have a, you know, highly skilled, moderately skilled, labor skilled. And then, and we're able to deploy those. That's the most cost-effective way for deployment. Now, during events such as a hurricane, a snow event, everyone knows how to work, everyone. We, everyone from across the department line supervisor knows how to work plows, how to put the plows on, the snow, put the spreaders on, the sand in, salt in, those type of things. So they're, they're cross-functional, but they also have their line of business from day to day.
That's within public?
Yes.
General maintenance is completely separate?
It's under Public.
It's a separate number in your, in your budget.
It's under Public Works. It's all under the Public, wait, Public Works oversees all of those items.
I looked at the numbers and it's, there's 800,000, I mean, it's over $2 million to be spent on Public Works and General Maintenance. I just wanted to know why, why there's 800,000 here and 100,000 here.
Yeah, I mean, I can, it's a managing, no, no, it's managing the resources more effectively, more towards either what trade or activity would be. So we can be more specifically focused in those areas. But they all fall under, in general, we have a Public Works Director that oversees a team under the Public Works, yeah, maintenance, drainage, those type, bulkheads, bulkheads is broken down in there. So we have a number of different disciplines under that, but they all, there is a lot of crossover. So we have a number of different, uh, disciplines under that, but they all, there is a lot of crossover amongst that. Does it help? I mean, is that?
But, no. If I could see the numbers, no. I mean, if I could go, I'll, I'll come over.
Come on over. I mean, I'll go over and, sure.
Okay. Hey Bob.
Yeah.
Uh, last meeting I, I couldn't make it and I sent a, uh, an email comment in through official channels. And, um, the problem was the, the parking of boat trailers and vehicles on around. I mean, there's days that there's ten trailers parked on yacht club drive and stones around. You know, I mean, do you have a remedy for that? It just shouldn't be.
Uh, I, I don't have a solid rep, like the yacht can or can't. We, we, we have issues.
Well, why, why is it permissible for them to be parked on basically on the street rather than not let them park in the yacht club parking like that? They're parking on, on.
Again, public road versus yacht clubs, uh, uh, an amenity for us. So we, we have some control over a parking lot more so. Public access road, public access roads, we have the state, we also have to meet their.
So you have no parking regulations at all?
I, I, I just gave you the answer. That's, that's what the answer is. We have to follow state code for the roads. State code trumps hours.
No, no, but I mean, there's no parking regulations at all.
Whatever the state requires. There are some parking considerations in the state code of how you can park, where you can park, those type of things. That's what our police force has to follow because our, our roads are public access road.
Okay, but they're parking on ocean pines property on the shoulders of, of undeveloped lots, basically. So it's ocean pines property.
If it's a road, a paved road, it's a public.
Oh, it's on the grass, Bob.
But, okay. The road includes the easement to the right or left of the road.
Okay.
Uh, it's that, you gotta read the public's code for roadways. You have the, the, the road, I, I know you don't like it. Listen, I, I prefer no parking on the side street. I don't like parking on the parkway when folks are trying to bike or walk or traverse other than by car. But they're allowed to. I can't supersede the state.
No, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying.
No, I'm not taking.
A lot of us have been under the impression all along that there was no parking or it was a homeowner's.
The D R's say one thing, but we opened up to state road, and you all know they're open. We get state down in county to us for funding for, for roads. Okay, everybody knows that, right? Public gas tax. So that passes down to us. Part of the agreement, I don't know if you all recall, but we had gates out front when, at the inception between White Horse Park and then we, uh, Ocean Pines forty years or thirty-five years ago, we did the gates. They removed the gates and turned it into, um, part of the county road system. So we can get some of the tax relief or some of the, the monies from that. Public access roads, which means we now meet the state code for the roadways. And that includes the parking, that includes the shoulder, that includes all of them. So it supersedes the, the D R's because it's now open up for public. It's kind of a twist, but trust me, I've had to look into, I get those concerns a lot. Fair concerns.
Let's move to next question, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Bob, just for the record, uh, about the mobile food of the year. At the last budget meeting I was there and I think it's a fifty-five thousand.
Five hundred and ninety-nine.
On the way to Salisbury the other day, I noticed Pete Richardson has the physical fire company food wagon out there on the auction yard for, auction coming up. It's a health approved setup, first class food.
Okay.
Uh, they're not using it, I hear, by word. And, uh, it's sitting there, it's probably worth about sixty to seventy thousand when they bought it. Word has it that they could probably be picked up to less. I'm saying there's an appreciable savings there. Inspect that food wagon. It's supposed to be up to outstanding. Uh, and maybe that would be a good idea to try it out in the community to see how successful it is from here to. And then if it is successful and you wanna do something to work, uh, you could go that line. It had to be repainted. Can't have physical fire.
Sure. If we send the money, they'd. But I just think there's not activity there and it saves us thirty thousand. I appreciate you. We, we don't have to go by some place and do a budget where we're trying to get as close as we can to think where we need. That one's new capital. So we try to sharpen it based on what our cost approach is to it, but doesn't even have to. Approach that type of spending. If we can do it cheaper, we certainly will. Hey, appreciate you. Yes, ma'am. Happy today. Tomorrow night's it. Yes, ma'am.
All of my friends are really. But the other thing I wanted to mention and ask. There's a lot of newspapers being delivered and left in the.
I brought that up.
And, uh, I've been picking up some of my neighbors who are just using. And they went away, had to call, tell them.
Right.
So I supplied them the numbers, how they call this circulation. They were very astounded that I came up with this. I don't understand why that is, but I was wondering.
The phone number?
Yeah.
Sure.
I can.
Yeah, let me try to, let me take that step further. Um, yes, we put them, it's not an issue. I mean, that's information we put out so you all have a single spot. I'll go a step further. One of the local papers, they had a, uh, two things have occurred in recent weeks or a pilot. A is you start to see some of the black boxes on mail, okay, by salt. Okay, they just start popping up. There's no introduction. They just showed. That same, uh, company also had drivers that were just tossing into any driveway. We've had, uh, residents have called in and we've had direct contact. Uh, one, the boxes were supposed to be, uh, at the corporate level, the cut, that particular paper's owned by a parent company. They, they apparently use those boxes in other areas. They were supposed to come talk to us about potentially putting them. I noticed they, they all came out. We didn't grant them access that, that the parent company started it without any contact. So they've been removed, um, and they've changed their delivery company. Uh, the way it was being delivered is now being delivered differently. So if, if you look, we've already seen a more favorable impact. Yeah. So, so it, it became a, a big issue really with including the boxes. Who knows where they came? I mean, we, no one knew it did not. A little follow up. And, and they've been great to work. They weren't, once they were getting calls from us, they were getting calls from residents, they, they, they took corrective action.
We have a circular driveway. That are never there have a circular driveway. So that's just between two. And then it goes on and on. So I'm ending up with eight. As many as twice a week.
Most are pretty good and we kind of, you know, you always get phone calls where you try to call someone. I'll tell you most, just, they'll, they take a couple of calls because the driver keeps, you know, there's a particular case that their delivery team just wasn't following. So they just cleaned house and started, went to one they'd used, but a little more cost, more expensive for them. Were focused on delivery, that higher expectation. It seems to have made. I, I'm well aware of it. Yes, sir.
I noticed, uh, a month ago that I have a tree outside. And trees dying.
Okay.
But not, not much.
My yours.
Take down. Any receipt, somebody goes.
Yeah, you can call the public.
Heard it's a fall, whether it damages.
Well, it depends if, if it's not, I, I'm not gonna get the insurance side, but now that might stay issue. Who are the owner of the property is supposed to rectify before it falls. Okay, so you need to contact them. If it's property we own of our lives, we'll take care of. Uh, if it's property, you gotta notify them. So they rectify the situation. Because we can't go in there and complain with private property. You can't. So we need to contact the owner. If you don't know who it is, a fog come up, uh, and we'll, we'll try to get a hold of you as well. Because we don't want to issue. We'll try to help with it. Yeah, but that's what we wanna do. Contact whoever the owner is. That's who we need to contact first. I'll go here. I'll work my way back. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
One is, uh, I didn't hear anything about swimming racket club tennis.
Mm-hmm.
Is that gonna happen this year?
Yeah, uh, swimmer racket club tennis court resurfacing is something, that's your question, right? Swimmer racket, I repeat it just so we can hear it. Um, yes, we have money put in the budget to resurface. Off the top of my head, the number is a hundred and forty thousand to do them all.
This year.
In, in, uh, the outcome, the, the starting May first budget cycle. Uh, but with that being said, that's complete replacement, carrying down to subgrade. We may not have to spend that level depending on once they take the, those courts have been there a long time. Once they get down to a certain level, if the base is, is fine, we're gonna surface over top of that without having to go all the. It, it depends on the compaction and the sub, uh, such, uh, the, the grading under it to see if, if we can go ahead and just do it on pack. So it's a lot cheaper if you go that route. But again, reserve replacement item. So it doesn't impact to actually spend whatever my dollar amount is doing. So that's question one.
Question two is, is curiosity.
Yeah.
In front of the houses and pines, there are ditches.
Yes.
My understanding is that the purpose of the ditch is to collect water. Water goes downstream and it goes out into the canals. Not all.
Okay. I mean, they go somewhere, yes, which, can you be more specific? I mean, not all dumps into a canal.
My question, my real question is.
I knew there was.
How should you go along?
See, I could just stop. No, you said.
Other than the houses don't have ditches.
Some of the houses don't have.
Just flat. No ditch. This, this house has a ditch. This house doesn't have a ditch. That house has a ditch. Does anyone take care of the ditches?
Yes, it's stormwater planning and the community was developed on where the stormwater plant. Since the homes have continued to develop, that plan evolves. Anytime you change the topography of the land, the, the stormwater's impact. We're supposed to handle three inches of rain in twenty-four hours. That was the original design of the, of the storm. We can get three inches of rain in two hours on, on, you know, certain days. In addition to that, a large part of our community is tidal, uh, impacted by tidal flow and not just straight drainage. Okay, so some are impacted, some will hold water for two tidal cycles. Okay, before that water actually drains out of the ditch because it's a tidal, it's, it's impacted by the tidal flow. And during the times when we have the water pushed in because of a nor'easter or storm, it may be three or four cycles where the water recedes. So it really depends what particular area, but there is a design. And if that design is disrupted for some reason and you're aware of it, let us know. We actually have a specific team identified to, to the gentleman in the back's question, that actually a drainage team that goes out and takes a look at it.
Every, every house is supposed to have a ditch.
No, I didn't say that. I did not say that. There's, there's a design for the entire community. So I, I don't know specific area, I can't tell you specifically which house it has or doesn't have. I, I, I just can't answer that right now. We can get you that information. Does it back up in your yard? Does it back up in?
I don't have a problem.
Oh, well then, then no.
I'm just curious. When I drive around.
You know something about water gets in your yard, right?
Why the hell do they have a ditch if they don't have a ditch?
Yeah, no, it, it, again, and there's some, we have some folks that are fortunate that don't have, you sound like one of them, that have no impact with the drainage. It just works whether it's a ditch or not. So please understand you're in, it's neither, none of your neighbors green, whether you have a ditch or not, but there's no water flow impact. Be thankful for that because we have some there still struggling and every, every time we get a tide cycle, heavy rain that's still struggling. I mean, we're built on, on marshland. I mean, you know, it's.
We do have a program out there.
We do.
Where people are going around.
Every day.
Cleaning out those ditches.
Every day.
On a regular basis.
Every day. We actually assigned a crew, bought a special pump to blow out the pipes, which we always had to schedule and rely on the county. They were the ones who did it. Uh, a year and a half ago, we actually bought the trailer with the pump to blow the pipes out. That's made a huge difference.
Because I've never, I've never seen that in action.
They're out every day and you're not having an issue. So that's, that's why you don't see them. When's the last time some firefighter show up at your house? Ambulance?
Only one day.
Police.
Pump out the fire.
Okay, so none, never. That's a good thing for you, stay. No, good question though. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, could I ask another question about the ditches, please?
Sure.
Um, now, how do I say this? In the back of our house, we're perpendicular or right beside, um, Ocean Parkway.
Okay.
There's a row of houses that are right on Ocean Parkway. Then there's a ditch and then there's us.
Okay.
The us has the ditch in the backyard and it's separated by a little service road behind the houses along Ocean Parkway. And that.
South Ocean Park?
Yes, in South Gate, um, actually Haven End.
Okay.
Marview, um. The, the roadway has a perfect embankment. What has happened, um, is that we've lost about three feet of erosion in our backyard. And it's already working its way up to the trees that were lining the backyard. And my fear is that with that erosion, that the trees are gonna start to lean and they're gonna be like the, the man with the, with the problem is that we took a tree down in our side yard because the branches were overhanging our neighbor. So we try to be neighborly.
Right, I hope everyone tries.
But what I, what I'm afraid is going to happen is that those trees are gonna start to lean toward the ditch because they're eroding right up to it. We've lost about three feet of, um, property. And I'm wondering, can that property be put back to its original thing when we bought the house sixteen years ago? Or, um, can something be done to fix the embankment? Whose responsibility is that?
You can call our, the public works team. I'll have someone go out and look at.
Well, when it was at one foot, I called the public works.
How many years ago?
For you.
Okay, so I knew it was a number of years ago.
So the guy came out from public works and he sat there with his arms like this, holding a cup of coffee. And he looks and he goes, I don't think you have a problem. I said, I think that if we keep at this rate, we're gonna have a problem. He goes, no, I don't think you will. And I felt like I had to take his word for it. But I didn't know if I can work in the ditch, if I can replenish it with.
You, our, our team will tell you. Part of the, part of the issue we have with our, our stormwater management is not only the stormwater mitigation, but also the impact of coastal bays. There's a lot of things that have to be done. So when you're talking about bringing more dirt in or, or shoring up or any of those type of things, there's a number of steps that have to pick. Boot county potentially state inspectors to tell you what they can or can't and at what level you're allowed. So our team can help you with that.
What I know is that I watched the ditch diggers when they did come out. And they were coming out because it used to be that they mowed along the, the thing, but then they cut off access. Because the neighbor was using his backyard to park it and the lights were reflecting in everybody's window. Um, but when he was, when, when the ditch ditch diggers were coming out, they actually were putting their shovels down and scooping away from them being on the service road. They were actually scooping our property all along that whole thing. And they took more of the dirt off of our property. And so that's why I was thinking that it's an ocean pines matter that you should.
We'll, we'll wrestle over it. I can't tell you right now. You can call our team at public works. Ask them to look at your, you know, tell them what your issues. They'll put it on the work order list. Make sure you give them your name, what it is. The more information you give them, it goes right on the work. Folks that hate that, but I look at those once a week. Sometimes they're long, sometimes they're not. Um, and if there's one that's been hanging out there for a while, they're all dated, who the caller was or the number was. Um, so I'll see it if it keeps popping up over a long period of time. And then, um, you can certainly call me if it's not, you know, when it's, the police hasn't come out to look at. Uh, but you wanna get on that list, uh, you know, so they can get out and look at.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm gonna go that way first because his hand's up three times. I have two. Okay. Is it possible, the newspaper problem? Yes, it's veteran. And we did have the problem throwing doubles on everybody's lot, which was a big problem. But there are a lot of lots. We see pictures of all time with like multiple. Yeah. Is it possible to get the CPI guys, you got two of them driving around all day long and there's pickup trucks. I saw one four times.
I saw one four times today while I was with my house. Just if they see one, that it has a load amount of papers, just to stop chucking it in the back of their pickup? I know it's not their job to score.
I, 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 no, it's that answer. As soon as we started, I, I, you look at me like that.
They're getting paid by the act.
No, they're not being paid to pick up newspapers.
They're not being paid until they walk around the...
Just, I'd say, here, here's what I'm gonna tell you, no is the short answer. I'm gonna go long answer, I will. We can't do public service for every, every, that's not our responsibility. Plus, if I pull them off of that, the neighbor down in the next section could be wigged off that we didn't violate, you know, write a violation for this one. Everyone has a job. I can't have them stopping to pick papers up. We do have a team that goes around, that is dedicated to picking up trash, that goes around, I see them every morning somewhere, um, that goes out and they're, they're picking up ditches, they start on the parkway, and they drive through the committee picking stuff up. So we do have a team, but not the CPI. Again, you're trying to cross my Public Works and everybody else, it ain't happening.
It's gonna happen before I, this, this year ends, I can tell you.
But anyway. Now, all of us, you on that, that won't happen. The guys that have it.
But that's okay. All I need to know, I just, I see them all the time.
But again, the papers are not ocean finds responsible. We're trying to, as, I know, but you've got, just like the leaf removal, we spend nearly a hundred thousand dollars a year on leaf removal. Okay, now, it's because we're, we're, it's our responsibility for stormwater management, so I can't have leaves in the ditches. However, people take advantage of it. We go by, clean a ditch, three days later, there's more leaves in the ditch. It's not from the trees, they're raking them back in the ditch. So when we start a process, people take advantage of it. So that's my only concern.
I understand that, but it's not everybody that takes advantage of it, you know that. There are some people.
A hundred thousand dollars in expense impacts all of us.
I get it, but, but we're also trying to keep the community...
Oh, I agree, I agree with it. That's why we...
For all of our property values.
I agree with, that's all, that's my only...
I agree. And if you have somebody that they go out there and they clean it up when these guys drop it down, I take back the CPI guys, they just...
They're gonna keep watching you and your...
But anyway, so it's the next question, you're gonna hate this one.
I didn't like the last one.
Can you please, in detail, explain to me, we have, we lost fifty-three thousand dollars in January.
No, we've had this discussion, I'm not here going into detail with you.
It's open seventeen...
No, here's, here's what I can tell you. All right, let's talk, you, this is one's a hot for you. It's really, so, I, I know, I'm not gonna give great detail, I don't have the numbers, and then someone's gonna call me a liar. Trust me on this, I'm getting it every day, and you all know who, who does, so. Here's, I, I care, because I'm me. Okay, well, I'm gonna answer you, but I'm not gonna give you too much specifics. What you miss or misunderstand, and we've had the conversation, so I'm gonna say it openly, it's an amen, I know you don't, it's an amenity. Well, well, that's where, just so you all know, our, our disagreement on this, okay? Yacht Club's an amenity. There are gonna be times when you have amenities that cost the, the association money, but it's an amenity open for your use, okay? So we subsidize in areas at times, okay, some of the amenities, because it's something. Uh, the, the Swimming Racket Club courts, as an example, we don't make money, they're free courts. It's an amenity we pay to replace, so you can use it, it's part of being in a community. Again, it's just, I'm giving the fundamental, you want details. So when you're looking at the yacht club, there are certain months of the year where we have employees, we have operational costs, they're associated with keeping it open. Those costs for the facility, we don't fire people and rehire them every couple of weeks based on production, based on, uh, where things are. We have the amenities open to serve our membership. We've scaled down the hours, we've tried different, uh, um, offerings, we've tried different, uh, food offerings, price points, we're doing everything we can to tightening it up, make it work. But quite frankly, as long as we always know it's an amenity, there are gonna be times when it's gonna lose money, because we're open for the use.
People don't get married.
What's that?
People don't get married, Jenny.
Well, that has an impact on the budget, too. So we do have those, so what you hope to do is put enough, uh, dollars in the savings account, that's how I look at everything, savings account, I mean, put enough in to carry you throughout the year. This is the first year where it looks like we're gonna be pretty close to that, which is awesome to me. You know, try and get them, my goal with the amenities is break even. If I can get them to break even, we're in positive, that means we don't subsidize to make them operate. And, and yacht club and aquatics are near that point this year. Well, that's pretty big, so having some losses during this time of year, as long as it's because it's an amenity, and we're open, we, we're gonna feel those losses. Now, I know you, you disagree, it's not business like we should be closing, or we should be reducing, or we should be changing. I got it, I fully understand.
But whether it's food or labor, why is it...
Most of it, it's usually labor costs. Labor's always, we've had that, they, typical, the, the most costs for operation are your labor costs. I mean, that's in most businesses, so it's not just the club, I mean, most businesses, your labor costs are the biggest piece of... We've had this talk.
I know, but I still don't get it.
I can't change my answer.
It gets worse every year.
Every, okay, here's what...
No, every, this, just in this month, is what I'm saying.
Here's what I can tell you, our operations are perfect this year, and last, well, can you go with some of the good, we're in the black?
I love the good in the summer, I get it. And I think, and I think that, I think that you do probably too much labor, too much food cost in the summer, and our good would be even better. That's what he's working on, I know Jerry's doing it.
Yeah, he said it. No, he said it, I mean, he agrees, Jerry's doing a good job, I mean, we're not just agreeing, disagree on that.
Yep, I just, it's just every year, in January, December, it goes higher in the negative, so maybe we should only have four people instead of eight people.
I don't know, this might...
As a business person, if I had to pay thirty-two hundred dollars a day to run a business in December, in January, I'd go out and... Thank you for your thought.
You're very kind.
Just your help, I appreciate it.
Look, no, no, again, it's, so find a way to break even, that's our goal. You're right, I mean, the costs run high. A lot of businesses, especially, uh, restaurants and those, they close in the middle. There's a reason, we understand that, but that's not what ocean finds is. So unless we change our philosophy and make it a business where we might make those different type of decisions, and some people are pushed to do that over there, it's an amenity, and that's, naturally, that's the biggest difference.
And they have, and they have increased different events that are going on there that are really starting to catch on.
The bottom line's still the bottom line.
I know, but you have to give, you have to give it a little bit of time, I mean, the, 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 the port, the, the port night, the wine night, the trivia, every... It's really starting, it takes a little while for it to catch on, and that's the times, the dead months during the summer.
They're not there, I don't, I see, I see the people there, but still...
Hey Bob, I, I think you're getting a pushback on the food truck, you're talking about amenities that are subsidized. Property owners aren't looking to open a new amenity that's gonna be subsidized. Are you gonna tell us that the food truck's not gonna cost us money in the subsidy? That we're not gonna lose money?
Here's what I can tell you, I don't put anything forward that I don't believe will work. I know you don't believe that, some people go, ah, but, I, I have no interest in running a food truck, none. What I have interest is serving the needs of the community. We have huge gaps in offering food. I don't wanna add onto Monford's Landing Pool a separate building, a separate structure to serve food at it. I don't want to add a building out near Sports Court Pool that can serve when we're having Fourth of July celebrations, any more than I wanna add something here to serve all the different things we do in the parks. So this is not because I'm excited about having a food truck, and that's where people get lost. I, there's no, wow, I want a food truck, okay? It's not that, it's trying to find ways to meet the needs as they arise for our members, whatever those needs may be.
I, I got that, Bob, and I'm, I'm not trying, I, I, I don't...
No, this is fine, I'm, I'm good, no issue.
First of all, you talk about the Fourth of July, that's once a year. The Monford's Pool, I go there with my grandkids every weekend, everybody brings their own pool. So if you put a food truck outside, what are you gonna do, say, no outside food in the pool? Um, all the other events, the park, there's somebody up there selling hot dogs, Parks and Recs or the, the Juanas, I really don't see the need for it.
Again, but that's my job and my team's job to identify the needs. You may not see it, we do, and we hear it, so we try to be responsive to it.
But then the rest of the property owners are gonna pay for it when it's subsidized.
I, i- if it's subsidized.
All right.
Look, you say that, think about this, five years ago, six years ago, okay? I walked into a place where aquatics, golf, and yacht club are losing two hundred thousand dollars plus each annual. I, no?
To a run, or maybe ten thousand, that wasn't...
Eleven thousand dollars, eleven thousand four hundred dollars, but did you see the numbers for the year? See, look at the service, again...
That cost, that cost, make and lose, make and lose, I don't think...
You're not serving your membership, see, that's business versus amenity. If you can't get that philosophy, I can't fix it.
I know, but I'm...
And I know we'll always argue, listen, I got it. So with that being said, we have two of the major amenities, they're getting close to break even, okay? We've made some major shifts in our approach, our management style, building at the yacht club, but the biggest thing, building doesn't make it, it's who manages it. Jerry's doing a fantastic job there, and that's why numbers are...
I'm talking about the yacht club, I'm talking about the truck, Bob. I'm not trying to give you my...
No, no.
But I'm gonna say, as long as, as long as you wanna...
You, you hang on, hang on.
The yacht club is not an amenity, it's a, it's a retail business that sells a retail product at retail prices and charges everybody the same fee. An amenity charges different fees for, for members, and non-members, it's not an amenity.
Here's what I can tell you, please look at, you live in an HOA. We all, we all pay, it is an amenity. You don't like that, that's fine, we've had this discussion, but it's an amenity, period. Unless we change it, for you all that say it's not, listen, I know business, I agree. If the, if the dollars aren't there, you don't do it, but amenities are different, we're here to meet the community.
But please, I'm sorry, I, I didn't mean to, I, I, I got kinda dragged off the track here.
You drove, I didn't drag you, man, you drove.
The, the food truck, yes, is gonna be subsidized, basically. You're counting, you're, you can't show that the food truck is gonna make enough money to break...
We showed dollars in the performa from three of our, our food service managers that said it would work for us. I don't do that, they, I looked at it, did kind of, we, we call it the murder board, where it's good, bad, indifferent, did that in byline, said, okay, this looks like something that would work. If we didn't believe that it would work, we wouldn't offer it. So to, to my point, which you don't like, but I'm gonna tell you again, I, major amenities are now getting close to break even, okay? So do I think a small piece of a food truck could work? Yes, it's not unlike the Swimming Racket Club, where we made a ten or twelve thousand dollar investment and said we need to cover those costs, we almost doubled what we thought we'd make. So yes, we have some smaller investments where we think we can, we can make that work. We wouldn't offer it if we didn't think so.
No, that's all I wanted to get at.
Again...
It's not gonna cost the property owners money.
There's never a goal to cost money with amenity offers, we try to break them even. I mean, that's always my goal, I mean, if you can run a business like to get them to an even level, we don't have to subsidize. But if you wanna look at where it's not breaking, well, I might forget to that, because that's a negative, but, but you need to think about it. We don't just throw things at there because it'd be funded. Food truck's gonna be a pain in the backside to operate, we recognize it, but we kinda went down everything. We started talking to some outside vendors, we had some great input. My friend in the back who we wanna argue with, but he's actually provided some input of other things to look at. That's what it's about, bouncing ideas, look at different ways to do, what are we trying to do to bridge the gap based on the needs of our membership? Food service at several departments and several events are needed, so that's why we, we've introduced it.
You know, you said at the, uh, family night at the yacht...
Well, we, there, there are looks, there are ways to offer it that, again, that's where the initial started, as an opportunity to use it for that quick grab and go. So yes, all those are opportunities for us to put, family fun nights are great examples, where it's packed and you don't wanna overtake the kitchen, or we set up the extra tables, and we kinda do it out there. There's another example where you don't...
The group five, we opened one...
Oh, there. Who said that? No, who said that? You laugh, but we actually thought about that, that's not what we, that's not what we haven't thought about.
Actually, beer bar for this...
Yeah, there you go.
Again, we, we actually, we actually thought about that as an option, so. Again, start slow, I know you all think it's, you know, we're, we're crazy with it. Again, you try different things to meet different meetings.
Stop calling it...
I just truly believe it's because we thought that when we got the yacht club, it was gonna be able to service all...
No, it's never gonna service all of our needs, it's gonna, what are you looking at for? We have a beach club, we have a, a, a...
Not a yacht club, we have a big kitchen and all the employees and all the stuff we have.
You're really, listen, we're not gonna, you're not gonna dominate this, I'm done with you, done. You're not gonna win. Anybody, anybody else with another question? And we always have this debate, so it's, there's no harm in it.
Think of a business, a business versus an amenity.
Yes, sir.
Putting the business side apart, your job is to have amenities to serve the needs of this community. Now, our constitution, Bob, is there anything in the earth that has to make any money or can operate in the laws forever?
It can...
And it's subsidized by me.
You subsid, you moved in HOA, so you subsidize.
So that matters, all of our amenities lose money?
Nope, it does not.
Okay.
Now, now, with that being said, if you read them, business like manner, we're supposed to focus right on business like manner. So you can't just throw money, throw money, you try to run it as effectively as you can, and that's our goal. Uh, the board makes firm determination, you know, following the law, it's amenities. I mean, that's pretty much what it is, it's an offering for you all. But the board makes firm decision what's in the budget, not in the budget, whether to build something we don't, whether to buy something we don't. That's why you elect board members, and they make those final decisions. Listen, I make a lot of recommendations, some make it, some don't, but the thing I'm gonna do is keep, and, and I get criticized for it, but here's what you, what I'm gonna tell you, I'm never gonna just sit back and roll with it, hope it works out. I will continue to try, as long as I'm in a certain role, different things, different ways, different opportunities to make it work. Some like that, some don't, but frankly, as long as I'm standing here, that's what I'll do, because I think it's what I should be doing. The board always has override, say, nope, and they've turned me in different directions before. No issue, that's why you have elected members. Simple, it's not a hard process, it shouldn't be full of anger and angst over it. We're, we've, we've developed an okay back and forth, but there's, you know, the first few times, I thought we were gonna fight in the parking lot, but we've actually developed the, okay, this'll work, he's gonna yell at me, I'm gonna yell at him, neither of us win, so. I still think I'm gonna win, he thinks he's going to, but it's okay, it's a membership.
Everybody, I just...
Well, we will, when we break even, I'm gonna call against it, we'll win.
Payroll, I want everybody to win, our expenses are five hundred dollars and...
That's wrong, never happened. That's wrong, that's wrong, that's wrong. Say it clearly, clearly.
I have two, two questions.
Yes, ma'am.
One is, aren't our profits, something like that, that we're five oh six, six, or something like that, we can't make a profit, otherwise we wound up paying taxes like our beach, right?
Not...
There's a certain amount of ways that we are not allowed to make a, a solid profit, because we are five oh one six.
We're nowhere near that.
I know, I know, but I'm just saying, yeah, and, and when you talk about amenities, that's different, you know.
Okay.
We're not in a profit, because we're in an HOA. Uh, the second thing is, the, uh, we're started on two seventeen, eighteen budget soon. Are we going to put big money in there for our fifty members?
Wow. Made my life today.
I'm free, there's gotta be an amenity, though. Make sure we subsidize it for the whole county, that'll be great. It should be, it should be...
Public, and we're gonna let Public Works run it, so that's all.
Just need to, I think they're, just asking.
Yeah, no, no, uh, we start our budget process, which is one of those, I, I've worked in many places, it's the longest budget process I've ever been through, so let's start there.
That's why I brought it up now.
No, but it, uh, we start our budget process, uh, September, that's when we, the department has, we start running it, and that's something where those type of, when ideas like that come up, just so you know, please share them, because a lot of things end up in budget, don't come from us, but soon they will come from someone in the community with an idea and offering it, hey, share one, try this.
What about the gate with the ramp? I'll share that one again.
You get nothing, your hand was up, ma'am?
Oh, I'm looking at that, I'm too late on our ramp.
Yeah, I'm interested in, um, I've seen a lot of things open up to the amenities, they've expanded, you go to the public, you've done a lot of things as far as the amenities are concerned, but I've never seen anything where ocean finds ever lets go of an idea of it. Um, I remember the golf course used to be a big issue, because it was always flooding, and there was always drainage problems, and then you had management problems, I'm getting this... And, uh, you know, there was one problem after another with the golf course, and there were some people that wanted to close it, but it didn't get closed, and you still continue on with the headaches that you have, seemingly, every year. And when I look at who is the golf club membership, it's a few people in the development, but it's not, and you're always asking for new memberships to come and so on. So is that maybe something, I like the idea that somebody said, let's close it and put some houses on there, and then you get, uh, some revenue, and it's a, it's an ongoing revenue that you would get. I like that idea.
Well, here, here, here... No, no, good question. Um, the major amenities, we, over the years, we've had stress issues. You're absolutely. Um, but the amenities are part of what makes us an HOA. Having these, you may not use one or the, you may all use one or you may not use any. But part of ownership in an HOA is all the components of the HOA. So the second thing is, is to get rid of something like that, it's more than just separate board members making decisions. You got referendums, you get certain votes, there's certain things to get rid of those. If you're gonna get rid of a major amenity, self property like that, there's a number of big steps that have to occur to make that happen. So it's not as easy as people think it is. It's almost impossible. It's, it, you know, now, with that being said, the board has taken over the years, many different approaches to golf. Whether it's running it ourselves, outside management, different outside management. I mean, they're trying, they're trying to do what they can to make it work. I mean, I'm not gonna say efforts aren't there. Just have it found the right balance in. We're hoping the new LU team, they won't been there, I guess, not quite a year yet. They've made some strides in some areas. So we're hoping that ends up being the right solution. So the efforts are being made to, to change the, either the players, the components, the, whatever it is, to make it Um, we, we, some things we've done over the years that have been successful at golf that people forget. We spent a lot of money on golf greens and money on drainage at the course. It, it had dramatic impact. The greens now flow the way they're supposed to, they don't get all saturated, mushy and stay ruined. Um, a lot of the fourteen hundred homes that surround the golf course, a lot of them, their drainage issues have been resolved where the golf course just drained to their homes. Uh, so there have been things over the years that have helped the, the homeowners around there. So, um, there are things ongoing. Um, managing the course has been the challenge. Um, and again, efforts are being made by the board to help get us to a point where we're not managing in a deficit.
And so now you're talking about, uh, making the, the golf club smaller so that you can put in a cart barn? That was just in the paper that I read today.
Wow.
Is that
Here
You know, I just
No, 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 it's good, no, it's a good question.
I mean, I have a house and I would consider tearing it down and rebuilding it after forty years.
Well, well, okay.
You know, and it's hard to hear that.
No, no, I can probably address, let me, let me address it.
I wanna tear it down and build again, and so I don't, I don't get that.
Well, here, let, let's address this. All right, let's start with, I'm gonna use a simple analogy to, to get us to the end. First, you buy a car, okay? You put certain maintenance in it, but at a certain time, you, you replace the car. At some point, it gets to
Because of depreciation, I understand.
Not, not, deterioration is why you replace it, it's not depreciate.
I have a nineteen ninety four Geo tractor.
Okay.
And it's running very well.
Hear, hear me, I'm trying to give you the answer, okay? Give her a three foot yard, she goes away, okay? No, so what happens is, a couple things, some are major amenities. When they were built, Yacht Club, uh, uh, Country Club, this building, the old building here, it was built to sell properties. Think about, when it was originally built, it was built to sell properties. Please don't make the mistake, say, it was built to last a hundred years. They were built to sell properties. Some of, some of them didn't even have insulation in. Okay, so, so over the years, we've grown as a community, more year-round residents, more growth in the community. So, so the use of the amenities or the buildings or the structures have changed over the years, they've evolved. Secondly, those buildings have deteriorated. Okay, some say it's cuz of maintenance, it's cuz of that. Say what you want, we're, we're actively maintaining our Public Works team, our maintenance group. I pulled that in for you. So we're going to maintenance on it, but there, there are so many things that occur over the years, so many changes, so many adds and closes, where those facilities start to, to deteriorate to a point where you have to make some major decisions. Yacht Club was a great example. When you like the new facility, the size, the shape, the color, irrelevant. The old one had to come down when you really looked at it. Well, there was a number of things, but it led to the point where it had to be replaced. There's a point where everything gets replaced. Heck, your knee will get replaced, your car gets replaced, there's so many things. So that's what they're looking at. So when you're looking at it downsizing, one of the things that we looked at five years ago, four, four or five years ago, looked at, the board said, let's look at Country Club and the Yacht Club, what do we wanna do first? So we did all kinds of research, all kinds of layouts, and we came up not only with conditions, but design, everything to go with. Part of that process was, the board said, let's get the yacht based on conditions, based where we are, Yacht Club. We went after that. Now, that's complete, what's next? Well, we, we've still the same conditions at the Country Club, even worse. So what you're, what you're hearing with a slightly smaller facility and a cart barn. If anyone knows Lighthouse South, we, we also have one property there, to the right of the club as you're, as you're standing there, uh, we have a cart barn that's in really bad shape. So we're gonna have to replace both, it's just old. I mean, if you walk through, anyone can go look at it, it's an old building. So, so what happens, instead of replacing two separate structures, one of the planned designs and the one that, that, that we had come to, I believe it made sense to us, was combine the two, so you reduce the overall footprint, you get a slightly smaller overall facility. And you take care of both items at once. So it's more cost-effective approach to curing both issues. So that's what you're hearing, a little bit of downsizing and, uh, locating the two together. If you look at Lighthouse South, their cart barn's actually under their facility. Great use of space. That's where our idea came. So that's what you're hearing in the paper, it's just, doesn't mean that's what we're gonna do, it's an alternative solution. One solution, may not be the final. We may not, we may not tear anything down, we may patch and paint, who knows? We're doing some pretty intrusive, uh, look at it right now where we can make some stronger decisions. And the board said, get after it, let's figure out what we need to do, and that's why they put some money aside.
Hey Bob, hey Bob, why don't we just, why don't we just wash our hands of the Yacht Club? I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Why don't we wash?
Just, just wash our hands of it and let, let, let a, a local businessman with name recognition, uh, lease the place out. I'd just like to hear your thoughts.
Okay, let's, uh, okay, you're right. Uh, uh, do you remember the, I don't wanna use business names. There was a property at the South Gate that's now new owned.
Yeah.
The, the, just previous owner was an extremely successful businessman for years in Ocean City. How did it work out? I, 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 whoa, 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 extremely successful businessman, but didn't work out at the South Gate of Ocean Pines. Strike one to your theory.
That's not strike one, that's
Like what? No, no, who's extremely, extremely successful businessman? He's an extremely successful businessman.
Bob, I hung out there seven days a week, I know.
I know you did. Hang on. Hang on. The other reason, and you don't like this, but it's a fact.
Well, you gotta say things that are true, Bob, and then I'll
I don't tell lies, I'm not smart enough to keep up with them. I've worked for
There's a million reasons
Don't tell me I lie, you, you factor your inaccurate with that, I'm not gonna accept it, done.
There's a million reasons that happened, I'm just saying.
Steve, don't call me a liar in my own meeting. I don't lie. Look, I don't lie.
All right, okay. Look, do you hear me? Do you hear me?
I don't need to.
I mean, you, you want, you want a confrontation, I don't want a confrontation.
How you say, if I'm gonna lie, knock it off. Here's the number, you ask for an answer, I'm trying to respectfully give it to you.
You're wrong about what you said first of all.
I'm done with this, I'm done.
Can I ask my question?
Yeah, Steve, one more time, I'll ask you leave.
Leave, I don't get it.
Please do then. Thank you, I'll see you later. Yes, ma'am, and I'll come right back to you, you had your hand.
Sorry.
We have how many bridges?
Four bridges. And you, you know where they are? Both know, okay, four bridges. Anybody tell me where the four bridges are? Just a trivia. I didn't know when I first started, I was confused, so I'm not, I'm not calling you out. Anybody four bridges? Board members? No? I got you confused too. There are four bridges. How many are at the North Gate? Two are at the North Gate, and then we have the one on the, one on the Parkway, right front off, and one on Clubhouse Drive. The two on the, on the, on the entrance and exit of the North Gate, they're technically bridges. Trust me, I, I, I've gotta look into reports twice every time I go to look at them. Neither did I, folks, trust me.
Sometimes it's three, but again, it's
Yes, ma'am.
We moved here twenty four years ago, beautiful, beautiful, really was. Drove in over the North Gate Bridge.
Yes, ma'am.
And everything pristine. The waters were pristine, the, I mean, it was just pristine.
I know.
Now we've gone through having none of those light bulbs fixed, having some of them fixed. We have weaves that look like no one gives a damn, and I don't like the curves.
No, no, that's fine.
But I, every time I drive over that bridge, I think, no one gives
She's still my question.
For twenty four years.
I've been here twenty six, I got to see, so I know. All right, here's what I'll tell you.
I want my old bridge back and I want it to be pristine where I live.
All right, let me, let me help you.
I hate it a lot.
I hear you, I will answer your question. Okay, first, we're gonna start, I'll make the easy one. The stuff around the pond?
I know, it's for the birds.
It is for the birds.
Now we got that picture.
Hang on, hang on, I believe the board's gonna allow me to clean that up. Recommendation from the environmental and natural assets committee, I sent a meeting recently. And, and they, they, they've gone through what worked and did, it was a good, listen, it was good effort. We need to take steps to mitigate the, the, the goose situation. I mean, something needed
Very simple. Oh, no, stop.
I wish it was as simple as you said. Whatever it is, I wish it were very simple, so. All right, so, uh, I believe that their recommendation coming out is gonna be go ahead and get that vote and clean it. All right? And, and the board will probably support, there's, I, I don't see a reason why they wouldn't, cuz So, we want it cleaned up, I want it cleaned up.
Are the lines
No, all that, stakes, lines, and everybody, again, I need
That's dangerous, I
The board directed me to do it, I'm not removing till the board allows me to remove it. Okay, so I agree, we wanna have Um, secondly, the light bulbs, I've tried, you laugh. Here's what I'll tell you, I've tried to replace them to find those bulbs. Everyone can say, oh, we, easy to find, they're not easy to find. They are not, they're seventies. You can't find them. So what we did was we replaced them twice with different styles of bulbs. I thought there was gonna be a public lynching. I swear to goodness, they
I know the reason why, the picturesque place it was, no one's there.
But if I can't find the replacement bulbs, I gotta change them.
Yeah, trust me.
You do, Terry was hard on me.
I've had this conversation
You couldn't, you can't find them.
So can you just pick a light and put it there?
I've done it twice
I know, but the, but the, but the two that are there
I know, the LED The LEDs are ugly, they are.
So isn't there someplace, there is a, a bulb?
If I change one, I got, I wanna change them all. Let me tell you that. And when we change them, we need to change the balance configuration in it. They're all balanced, these are all lights, folks, they're just old, they're
Look around in Europe, they have everything from way back when, let's not
We don't, we don't We don't, we don't live in Europe.
We live in America, so let's do that.
You don't have to tell me to replace it.
But what kind of bulb are you looking?
It, it's the dome, it's the dome.
We have some domes that we're not using.
Do they match the ones here if they don't match?
Well, it's a regular bulb for that.
Thank you very much.
I'm with, please understand, I'm in complete agreement.
Yes, it does.
I, I'm not disagreeing, and the board allows me, if they allow me to clean it up, I'll clean it up. If they allow me to replace the lights, I'll replace lights. I'm with you on it.
I wanna tell you this point, of course, with, with the new building and now maybe they're gonna change the roadway and whatever else is all
I'm not talking about that.
No, I know, I was gonna be talking about But down at the, at Casino
Yes, ma'am.
The north of Casino, there's a house almost ready to fall down, it's not your problem, I know. And across the street, there was, there's a garden place that looks like trash city. And, and no, 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 and then you come up the road just a little ways, and what the hell happened? That place is like trash too.
Wait a minute, it's entirely true.
But, but Because I, I have people coming to visit me, far away places, and they're pissed.
Trust me on this, if the board lets me clean up the bridge here, I will clean it up. I'm good with putting new lights up. I've tried twice. I'm, if it were up to me, I'd tear it down and start over. Yes? If the board allows me to do it, I'm guessing this board will let me do it.
The North Gate area just needs some attention and landscaping, it really does.
I'm with you. The property, the new property right next door, whether you like Palmer Gill's here or not, the property's starting to look really nice.
Yeah, and it makes it even worse.
I believe, I, I, I need some help on this. You were in Environmental Natural Assets Committee meeting, am I correct or incorrect? Their recommendation's gonna be go ahead and clean it up. So, there you go, board members sat in it a couple weeks ago.
But not even just that, you know that
I agree.
It just needs, it just needs
Terry, you're not, you know I want it, I'd tear it down and start over.
I was gonna say, but it just, it really needs
I agree, it looks horrible. It looked horrible last year when the suggestion came.
Yes.
I'm with you, you know this, yes, sir?
Keeping in the same area.
Yes, sir.
We have two nice ponds out there, but we have one with a fountain, one without a fountain. Now, I spoke to you a couple of years ago, and it's
Yes, sir.
Why you can't get another one on that right side as you're going out? And you say it's too expensive to run electric?
Not just electric, you say you have a kidney, you have the type of line you have to run is expensive. We also have other competing elements where other people At the South Gates, folks, where I get asked for, for the aerator and the sprinkler or the, the fountain as well. I put fountains in all of them. Please understand, me, I think the entrances don't, in my opinion, don't look great. But I don't have free will to make those changes. I just don't.
More water than a hot dog truck.
Well, you say that, you say that. It's an amenity need. I, I'm with you, I, I put fountains in all the ponds to include, I had a big one, big two year ago for South Gate, but a ton of water would light. Got shot down. I think the entrances ought to be screwed up. The board, it's a budgetary item. Trust me, I've got board members here that wanna get stuff done, so we, maybe we can look at that. I'm with you, and, and one of my board members right here, we sat in Environmental Natural Assets Committee, and he said, yeah, it didn't work, but we tried it. Didn't work, so we'll regroup, we'll get it cleaned up. Listen, I, I'll get it cleaned up, I promise, once the board gives me the go-ahead. I can't override board directive, you know this, right? Board directing me to do it, it's what it is. I believe they'll give me permission to fix it this year. I believe, I believe, right? Cheryl?
Well, I, I need
I have two board members, I'm trying to get to commit for you all tonight. Cheryl Jacobs is one of our board members, Tom Herrick is right here behind one of them, just, you all know one of them.
And both of you, as you are, and they're here, they're What you're saying, there is also another very vote that are adamant that we don't kill peace. And so, board and the committee, the environmental committee, has been trying ways to keep Those votes also don't want us to kill peace. Now, you and I may say, kill the damn peace, but, but, you know, we're trying to balance what everybody's concerns are here. And that's a difference. Balance, so we hear you, and we've tried other things, and so, it didn't work.
Right.
But gave that other group of people an opportunity to see, could make it work one way. Now we're going to approach it in a different fashion. And hopefully, a result of that be, you'll get a, uh, more aesthetically pleasing a more aesthetically pleasing look at the North Gate, and hopefully then, you'll be happy, they'll be happy, and that's our goal as a board, to try to make a balance between all these voices within the community, what they want and what they think the right thing to do.
Yes, sir.
Bob, is there, is there anything new you're pouring on about the entrance way medical center, that raises up the medic?
Okay, I know, you wanted to ask too, all right. Here's, the, the, the medical center came up three weeks ago, meeting where Mr. Gillis, the contractor developing it, came to a meeting to share his project today and what the future would look like, expressed his concerns with the right in and right out, some of the challenges he's had, had Mr. Donnie Drew from State Highway Administration here, had two representatives from PRMC, the hospital that's, that's locating in those buildings right, so there was a whole host of people, and they presented to our board of directors what the problem was, but at that time, they didn't have a formal request of a solution, okay, this where it got ugly. We had a lot of people show up for that meeting, to include some folks that flew up Florida, live up in that area, to come thinking this was a public hearing, to, to either fight one way or the other, have it the road, not the road, what have, put the, not defending the board, but put the board in kind of an awkward spot, it should have been, people get wound up because of bad information, whether it's press or social media, puts bad information, this was just an update board of where things were, and then potentially from Mr. Gillis to ask a request for consideration, he didn't have a formal request to give them, so it was more information and be able to do the exchange, the problem is, lost sight of information exchange because of the passion, again, without being able to hear all the facts. Following that meeting, Mr. Gillis re-approached with a formal letter requesting consideration for a roadway, okay, the roadway between where the medical center is, on the Ocean Pine side of the, of the waterway there, the pond, that connects to the bridge area and then out, okay, one of the things, and the board hasn't taken formal action on that yet, there, there's a lot of, a lot of consideration being given, is this even an Ocean Pines issue? Mr. Gillis knew with the, with the, the requirements were going to be for right in and right out, we bought the property.
Right, that, that's, I think, the element of the room.
Well, and that, again, these are facts, the board is, has heard, I'm, I'm not going to say the board is considering one way or the other, I don't want to speak for them, but it was more information giving to them at the time, bringing some up to speed that never heard of it, bringing those of us that have heard it several times up to speed on where things exactly were. There has been no formal response, yes, no, indifferent, I believe the majority of the board would like to see a formal traffic study that the state highway looks at way in, why is it, why is it our issue?
If push comes to shove, I'm sorry.
No, no, versus the developers' issue or state highways' issue, and that's kind of where things are right now.
Mentioned parking is such that state trumps our, our, do you know, can the state actually tell us, we have to grant them?
No, sir, no, sir, they cannot.
Thanks.
So, yeah, yeah, so they're.
They cannot dictate Ocean Pines.
They do not, we as a homeowner association can make the decision what to do, we, we actually, we as an association, heard from Donnie Drew, Mr. Gillis, and some others several years back, when they, they said they were developing that, and wanted to, to look at, they, they had the right in, right out access, part of the draw-up, I mean, that was part of the presentation, they asked us for the strip that was from their entrance, that roadway, to where our entrance into Ocean Pine, if we would allow that land to be taken over, so it would be a little safer ingress and egress, ingress and egress for our community members, for everyone either utilizing or trying to get in our community. The board did agree to allow that, and it, it did make sense at the time, because you'd be trying to jump out on this highway, on five eight nine, when those of us that live here are trying to get in, so it was worse of a mess not to do that. Now, we're in a situation now where the right in, right out is creating.
And those questions were definitely raised back then.
We're, we're North Gators, and our doctor's in here, I don't have a problem, I go to the library, turn around.
Well, and that's what was said at the meeting, is we, the, the proposal for those that didn't come to the meeting, one of the things that came up was, the traffic pattern going that way would bear for our residents, so several of our residents got to go, we know we can't get in that way, we circle around, come down that path of the road and come in, so there's, there's pros and cons to both.
But one of the problems that we brought up to you was, they're coming in the North Gate making U-turns, so Bob was kind enough to put U-turn signs up, now one has been run over and it's now.
The bridge, just so you know, that bridge gets hit all the time, all the time, you all know that? It's all the time.
But when, when he first was proposing that he was going to put something in there.
Yes, ma'am.
We thought it was going to be one building, and then he said that he's going to add five more buildings.
It's never been one building, it has never been, I don't know what you heard.
So there's a lot of traffic that's going to be going in and out there, we thought there was.
Potential traffic, yes, ma'am.
The, what is it called? Where M and T used to be, the Pramod.
Oh, Pennington, Tom.
No, the, the doctor's office that's down there, where Dr. Rock, it starts with a P.
Oh, the pavilion.
Pavilion, and, and so, there doesn't seem to be a lot of traffic going in and out of that building, so it's kind of okay, but with putting five more places in there, that...
We, we are under, we are under the impression, I say impression because I don't want to speak fact and have someone say you misrepresent or lie, we're under the impression that he will not be able to put five buildings, total of five buildings in with the current ingress egress.
That's good. Can he somehow go out on to ninety?
But can he say if he doesn't put buildings there, sell something?
I, I, he, he, he made that, that, that possible in front, yes, ma'am, that.
That's what I just.
Big part, yes.
We haven't had big part.
That'd be so Jack.
Any, any other, I don't want to tie you, but it's too much longer, any other, yes, ma'am?
I have a major problem with trash.
With what?
Trash, they're all over the place.
Okay.
On my street, in garage, front, front, if there are any things they put out, do the newsletter again, saying trash, yeah, yeah.
Yep, we, we'll add that to the newsletter, because they're supposed to be adding.
Yeah, because I mean, I drive down Ocean Parkway and talk about dumping Ocean Parkway driving down, so many people.
No, I agree, we'll put, we'll put something in.
Trash cans are everywhere.
They are, I'm with you, so, yeah, please put something, Mr. Reminder.
And I do have to tell you, Republic has been feeling good, they, they have come back to our house, when they, they go through and they'll see that we have like bags of leaves, they'll come back, they've been feeling really good, very helpful.
That's awesome, any other general questions? General is okay, not specific, thank you all for coming out tonight, thank you all, very lucky to be here.
Another notch in your belt.